Call to order, the special meeting of the Emory Unified School District Board of Trustees. May I have roll call, please, Ms. Tameri?
President Dice.
President.
Member Dwin.
Here.
Member Ash.
Here.
And I understand Member Patz is on his way.
Awesome. Alright, so we'll now start with Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Please have everyone stand for that.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No.
Alright, can I get approval of the agenda, motion?
Move, did we approve the agenda?
Second.
Awesome, no objections from me. We'll proceed as outlined in the agenda. We are now at Item D, Public Comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items that are not on this evening's agenda. Do we have any such? Awesome.
Can you get up and say that?
I know, can we get that on tape? Thank you, Mr. Bukowski, who says we're doing a great job. Alright, so we're gonna move on to actually convene our closed session, which we anticipate will be less than 20 minutes, I think. So we'll now move on to closed session.
Yeah, save some.
Thanks. So we're now reconvening back to open session. Ms. Tameri, can we have a report out from closed session this evening, please?
The board met this evening in closed session to discuss our public employment of a site administrator, and there were no actions taken.
Thank you, Ms. Tameri. We'll now move on to Item H, Consent Calendar. Are there any items board members wish to pull? We have hires and resignations.
I'd like to pull Item 1.
Item 1? So how about we take on number 1 first? And this is the hire of, it got blurry for me, Principal, Annie Yates Elementary School. Mr. Patz?
So I have some strong concerns about this appointment.
Can you talk into the mic?
I can. So I have some strong concerns about this appointment. I think when we look at the track record of this particular individual, we come across some troubling trends and patterns. You know, I'm still given pause that it wasn't just one site that issues arose, but if you look, it's followed him at every site he's been at. There has been some sort of, I wouldn't say small scale, but medium to large scale discord. And I think at this point, we need to avoid that and really come together as a district and set a tone where we are all on the same page. And I'm really concerned, given this individual, given Dr. Musfin's track record. You know, I think a single incident would give me pause, but you can blame that on staff. You get two incidents and I begin to have an issue, but by the third or fourth incident, I'm really, the track record is just, it's clear that sometimes he may not choose the right words. And having spoken with him, I still feel pretty strongly that this is gonna present challenges. And I know that Dr. Rubio has spoken to the idea of holding him accountable, but I feel he has no margin of error, and we all make mistakes, and we're not perfect. But if you come in without a margin of error, that really puts you behind in a chance to do your job effectively. And so I think instead of starting out with somebody at a disadvantage, we really wanna find somebody who's ready to hit the ground running. So I'm gonna be voting no on this appointment.
Any other comments from board members on Item 1?
Well, I can't say that, you know, in respect to Member Patz's comments. You know, I was able to actually meet with the principal. He seemed to be a very honorable person regarding being about children. I do understand some of his conflicts and issues at other districts revolved around adults. I am happy and pleased to hear that our superintendent has spoken to him regarding some of these issues. And first of all, he's very open to, you know, speak to anyone about the issues, but I think that he's really sincere coming here, knowing that he's under a watchful eye. And I'm going to, you know, believe that he will perform at the high levels that he have performed when it comes to student achievement at the other districts that he have served at. So, you know, to that extent, you know, I can support, you know, the hiring of this new principal, Annie Yates. But I do have all the respect for Member Patz's comments and, you know, his views and opinions about the hire.
Any other comments? And as this is, I wanted to also, if okay, pull Item 2, Personal Action Regarding the Resignation. And in that, just recognize the service for a number of the staff people, especially the principal at the element, excuse me, at the high school. So I just wanted to acknowledge that service as former Principal Chavern, who I understand is being able to take on another challenge in a different district. So just appreciate all of them. So we have Items 1 and 2, and I'm gonna now maybe split up and we can do it by a roll call for, oh, you're awesome. Thank you. Thank you for keeping me honest. Alright, public comment for Items 1 and 2. That mic?
Turn the mic off.
Oh, it's on.
Hello, hello?
Good evening.
Hi, I have not met the principal myself, but I am familiar with things on the internet. There's things on the internet about me, and they're really not necessarily an accurate description of me. And I'm concerned that, you know, in this day and age and on the internet, people who are naysayers and have a lot of negativity seem to dominate. You know, I had a car accident, and when I was looking in the Chronicle, I mean, people thought I should be hung and drawn and quartered, and it's really, you know, you try to do good public service. And in this case, I would imagine that this individual is aware that these things are on the internet. So you, you know, you may be looking at somebody who's gonna strive a little bit higher here to overcome that. And in this situation, you know, you had a personnel panel, and they basically made a decision. And to, at the last minute, not hire the guy, I mean, what would that do to his reputation? You know, they all knew he was gonna get a job at Emory, and now he wouldn't get this one. And I think it could be really damaging to the individual. So since he's already basically on board, I think it makes sense to continue with the process and to keep him on board and then and watch him very closely. But to not go forward is basically undercutting the recommendation process. I mean, I know it's just a recommendation, but those people made the decision based on, you know, some facts. And was it unanimous? Did everybody on the committee vote for it? So I think you should consider that. But I'm the kind of person that really tries to look out for and protect people's rights. And I'm not so sure that not hiring this guy would be the right thing in this circumstance. I think it'd be detrimental to him. And you could lose somebody who would strive a little bit higher to overcome that reputation. So, thank you.
I think there's a point-
Thank you.
I think there's a point of clarification. I'm not going on internet rumors. That would be, I think, inappropriate to me. It's a concern of a lawsuit where facts are put out there. It is actual facts on the internet, not gossip or people's opinions. It's a very big difference. And I think that's what's troubling to me, particularly when we have parents come up here and say, you know, "We're not being taken seriously as a school site council," you know, "and that's what we're striving for." And so I hope I'm wrong, and I'm hope that if this goes through, that he does a phenomenal job. You know, I'm one of the first people to admit when I'm wrong and very happy when it happens, when I'm being pessimistic. But I'm really concerned that we're setting ourselves up for. And I respect Member Dwyer's comments, but again, I worry if we have somebody without a chance, a margin of error, because again, we all make mistakes, but that margin of error is critical. And he does not have one coming in under these circumstances. And we're really limiting and tying his hands. And I think it's, you know, it's gonna come back and affect Dr. Rubio as well, as, you know, this is the face of the district. So I'm, again, I disagree with what you're saying, is it's, this is the right time to make, you know, when new information comes to light that wasn't there for the panel, you have to act on it. And I'm sorry, I've probably taken my time here.
No, appreciate it. Any other public comments of this particular, these two items on the consent calendar? So we'll now, any other board member comments? We'll now go toward, call the, go to vote, roll call, please. Ms. Tameri for Item 1? You know, I get rusty. I'm on vacation mode. I will not be in town after Saturday. Alright, so perhaps we can first do a motion for Item 1?
I move that we approve the consent calendar of Items 1 and 2?
Oh, yeah. Well, we're gonna take it one by one. Sorry.
Personal action number 1 on the consent calendar.
A second.
Any objections to that motion? And we'll actually have a roll call vote on that now, please.
Member Dwin.
Yes.
President Dice.
Yes.
Member Ash.
Yes.
Member Patz.
No.
And now we'll move on to Item 2. Can I get a motion for personal actions on resignations?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, Item 2, for personal actions of resignation.
Second.
Any objections to that? Roll call, please, Ms. Tameri.
Member Dwin.
Yes.
President Dice.
Yes.
Member Ash.
Yes.
Member Patz.
Yes.
Thank you, and appreciate all the comments. And I will note that part of, and this is an afterthought, I could've said it before, but I will note that one thing I do know about our recently appointed superintendent is that he comes with a strong background when it comes to managing school site administrators. And I think that's been a phenomenal, whether, whoever the candidate, any candidate, I do honestly feel that he has a really strong commitment to ensuring that every day, every student, every staff member, every person in the building has the best possible experience. So I think we do have a tremendous leader in our district to ensure, and also take the heat if necessary, as well as the board, on decisions we've made. But I think we do have a tremendous leader and strong support for any administrator and any staff member in the district. So I just wanted to note that. We'll now move on to Item, is that I-1? I am blind. I-1, Discussion Action Items. Item 1, Approve Establishment of a Special Assistant to the Superintendent Position.
Yes, President Dice, this item is to ask the Board of Trustees to consider approval for the position of Special Assistant to the Superintendent. And this position will provide direct assistance to the superintendent position in the transition from the K-8 and 9th through 12th grade sites as we move to a 1K-12 grade location, as well as providing administrative leadership stability to the Emory Secondary High School.
Any questions regarding this particular item, board members? We have the job description as well as the written statement.
So you're saying this would be a one-year job?
I forgot to ask that, too, actually.
I'm, well, it's a good question. I would anticipate that it's a one-year position, yes.
And then, given that our students are not at a, not at Emory High School, because it's no more, but in a makeshift school on a rented campus without fields and organization things, is it wise to have somebody splitting their duties between being the full-time administrator there and doing other things? Because I'm assuming that the principal position would go away.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to process your question for a second. Is it why, you're asking me, is it wise for someone to be at the high school principal and to?
So reading this, the first duty is, you know, the first thing is plan, organize, rec, special projects. But I'm feeling like our students deserve a lead administrator who's there on site, ready to handle what they have, because they're, you know, they're not on a comprehensive high school site. They're not even in Emeryville right now. They're across the street. And so I'm just worried that any focus taken away from a principal, I mean, a high school principal's a full-time job.
Yes, the primary, the primary work for this job description is to lead the high school position. So there is some flexibility in the way the job description is written to allow me, a superintendent, to be able to call this person at some point in the day that I, when I think it doesn't interfere with the operation of the school, and get some assistance either over the phone or to meet with them about some larger school district work or, and also to provide possibly some other background information for me. So, but the primary position and the primary work will be to lead the high school.
Any other questions for, regarding this particular position? I feel like I had one, but it's gone, so there's that. Any public comment on this particular position, on this item? Nothing? Alright, so it's back to the board. Without any additional questions, can I get a motion regarding this particular item? Don't jump out.
I move approval.
A second.
Any objections?
I'm a no vote.
Okay, let me, I'll do a roll call to make it, so it's always cleaner for me.
Member Patz?
No.
Member Ash?
Yes.
President Dice?
Yes.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
Alright, thank you for providing that context and detail. So we'll now move on to Item I-2, Approval of Resolution 23, 2013-14, Authorizing the Superintendent to Sign a Joint Occupancy Agreement, the JOA, with the City of Emeryville. We're just gonna handle this particular item first.
Yes, President Dice and school board members, the purpose of this is to consider approval of this resolution authorizing myself, a superintendent, to sign the JOA with the City of Emeryville. We do have Mr. Trayburne, the audience, who, if you have any questions, can come up and respond to this or any of the other discussion items as well.
And I will note, these are all, let's see, 2 through 5 are all items we discussed at our previous special meeting last Wednesday, which is helpful, that this concludes our second reading. Any questions regarding this particular resolution, board members? Pretty straightforward. Alright, any public comment on this particular item? Item 2 specifically.
Yeah, hi. I'm glad to see you going forward with the agreement. I was really impressed with the, oh, this would be on the turntable. But the only thing is, I think, you know, the document says that the agreement will be approved concurrently with the city, and it should've been done at a joint meeting. I don't think it should be done at a separate meeting. You're entering a partnership, and you should be doing it together, and you should be approving it at the same time. That's the only thing I have to say about it. Thank you.
Good highlight.
Well, I will say this. This is definitely a milestone to this project. I mean, basically, this project wouldn't be able to exist via the Assembly Bill 1080 if we did not have this agreement. So I think it's really the spirit of the intent of what the Emeryville Center of Community Life was all about, to bring more quality services to the City of Emeryville, and to, you know, improve the quality of education for our students. So, you know, I wanna applaud the board once we approve this, if we approve it.
Well, that's just the signature.
But I also, you know, just like to appreciate the legal team, who really, you know, the more I read this, the more, you know, I really identified this being a pretty phenomenal piece of document. So I definitely want to, you know, thank our legal team for putting this together. It's a very good document, and I can even see it being used throughout the state for other, you know, city and school districts who would like to form a partnership such as ours here. So I think this is a document that will be used, you know, for the ages. So I just wanna say kudos to our legal team, and as well to the city attorney for the city team as well.
Any other comments, any other public comments? Any other comments to Resolution 23, 2013-14? Right, can I have a motion to adopt or approve the resolution?
I move that we approve the Resolution 23, 2013-14, Authorizing the Superintendent to Sign a Joint Occupancy Agreement with the City of Emeryville.
Wow, that's amazing. Is there a second?
I will gladly second.
Awesome. Any objections to this? Ms. Tameri, can I have a roll call, please?
Member Patz?
Yes.
Member Ash?
Yes.
President Dice?
Yes.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
Wow, that was like the first one step, one part. One's done.
One down.
One's done. Alright, so we'll keep things moving. We're gonna now go on to Item 3, Joint Occupancy Agreement with the City of Emeryville for the ECL project. And I echo our public, public comment related to concurrent, but being in partnership, being together, that's a good, next time. Definitely next time. Next time, next time. So we'll now have Dr. Rubio.
President Dice and board members, the purpose of this resolution is to consider approval of the Joint Occupancy Agreement with the City of Emeryville under the terms and conditions as defined in the enclosed agreement. And I would add that there's also some new staff here who's gonna be helping us from Swinerton, and Nimon Lee Hardisty is here. And so we appreciate Swinerton being here. As Mr. Baker's out of town, and we have our architects and construction representatives and legal with us, who, and Mr. Bonet, who will all be with us as well Wednesday evening, just as an aside, at the city council meeting.
Alright, great. Any board comments to this particular one? I don't know if there's an echo.
You know, I do have a question, a couple of questions for the contractor, Turner. You know, in the, in the spirit of this whole project, when we actually passed the Measure J to build this project, we made actually two, I would say, covenants to the community. One would be the enrichment of education, of our educational performance, and two would be the enhancement of our regional economy. And meaning that, you know, we wanted to make sure that local businesses in this community was, would be really able to benefit from this project that would boost our economy regionally. So I guess within the contract, it does have a clause of reporting back to the board of the particular, you know, of the activities that will be going on with the project, as well as updating the board, as well as the city council with the community benefit agreement. So my question would be, what would be the, what is the process, or what would be the process for updating the board on the activities and the progression of the community benefit agreement?
Well, we'll work with Swinerton, John Baker. We're gonna produce a monthly budget report, which will update all of the local business participation. In addition to that-
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Okay. We'll be doing a monthly budget report, which will update all local business participation. In addition to that, we will be using a labor tracking software relation systems, which we can filter worker payroll by ZIP code, and therefore get reports on the local hire. Now, we'll be doing that monthly. We'll be doing a written report quarterly to you as well.
Okay. So will the written report be a presentation, or will it just be a written report maybe to Swinerton, and they would just read out on that?
I, probably the best thing to do is to submit the report, and then come to the board meeting if you have questions and talk about it.
So this is gonna be done on a quarterly basis?
Yes.
Now, would this be for the board? Now, what about the city school as far as, you know, updating the city as well?
Sure. I mean, however you wanna run the public forums, we'll participate.
Okay, okay. Now, so via the CBA, the Community Benefit Agreement, you know, you're obligated to, I believe, bring on about 10 local subcontractors?
It's by, it's by percentage of the contract volume.
Okay.
And, you know, a target would be about 30%. Currently, we're running about 45% local business.
Okay, great, great.
Just so you know, in terms of our outreach, we went out to 150 community-based organizations locally, who represent minority business owners, women business owner, local businesses, et cetera, to get the word out about the project and solicit participation.
Okay.
In addition to that, our purchasing department focused on the local pool that we knew existed to make sure that they participated in the pricing process.
Okay.
So-
Okay, and when we say local, we're talking Green Corridor, Alameda County?
It's Green Corridor. There's a local impact area focus, which is two ZIP codes in Berkeley, Emeryville, and two ZIP codes in Oakland.
Okay, okay. Now, let me, other question within the CBA, as far as the bond assisting workshop. Would that, would that workshop take place before this, the subcontractor bidding?
That's not needed, because we're not gonna require bonds from subcontractors.
Okay, great, alright, cool. And what about our student internship?
Well, as you may know, Jabril has been working in our office for the last year.
Right.
He helped us actually quite a bit in putting together this GMP.
Okay.
Hopefully, he learned a lot in the process.
Alright.
We've actually invited him to come to the city council meeting on Wednesday night, if he'd like to attend.
Okay, great, okay.
And we'll give him a ride home if he needs a ride home.
Alright.
So we'll continue. Elena Naya, who's our community affairs director, will work directly with the school district in identifying internship positions, and if there's, you know, science classes or whatever that would like to participate at one level or another in observing and talking to the people on the job site, more than happy to facilitate that as well.
So where's our, where is our max for students' internships? Do we have a maximum amount, or?
We don't really have a maximum amount. There's a practical limit, you know, just because it's, there's, once we're on the job site, we have some liability issues in terms of minors, et cetera. So we've gotta just be careful about how we handle it.
I think the contract says a minimum of three student internships, something to that nature. Okay, great, okay. That's good for me. Thank you.
Well, and I'll just note from that, the one we have currently, I know has been a phenomenal one for that student to participate in the program. So I think even before we've had this, you know, agreement in front of us and executed, you guys have been a true partner in this process and to our students already. So just really appreciate that work. Changing one life is, you know, is saying a lot. So I think it's pretty awesome. Any other comments or questions regarding the JOA specifically? Alright, any public comment on the JOA, Item 3? Nothing? Alright, so can I get a motion to, for approval of this one?
I guess I'm just making all the motions. I move that we approve the Resolution 24, 2013-14, Authorizing-
No, no, authorize.
Oh, so, okay. I move that we approve the Joint Occupancy Agreement with the City of Emeryville for the ECL project.
Feels good, huh? Alright, any, do I get a second on that motion?
I will second.
No, we're on Item 3, Joint Occupancy. We did the authorization for signature. Follow me, work with me. You know, it can be tricky. It can be tricky here. Alright, so I'll get a second on that?
Yes.
From Member Ash. Any objections to that motion and, any objections? Alright, roll call, please, Ms. Tameri.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
President Dice?
Yes.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
We have a joint occupancy agreement from the, from the school side. Alright, so now we can move on to- All right, so now we can move on to, um, item. Yeah, it's okay, you need to use a pen over there. Okay. So we're now on item I four, approval of Resolution 24, 2013, 14, authorizing the superintendent to sign a lease, leaseback agreement with Turner Construction.
Uh, yes, uh, President Dice and board members, the purpose of this item is for the board to consider approval to authorize the superintendent to sign a lease, leaseback agreement with Turner Construction.
Any questions from board members? Again, this is, um, also a second reading for us and for consideration this evening. Anything?
I think I asked my question out of order.
Yeah, you did. I caught that, but I didn't want to send you too far out. All right, any, um, any public comments to this particular item? All right, um, I'd entertain a motion.
But, but, I just, President Dice, before you continue, I just would add that there was, there was some conversation, I think, at the last board meeting or questioning about these types of agreements. And I, I would let you know that, uh, I did receive more information from legal counsel that while there has been some lower, lower trial court lawsuits, that, uh, none of those have been successful. So the, um, uh, all information appears that this is a, uh, still a very viable and legal structural agreement. I thought it would let the board know.
Thank you, Dr. Rubio. Any questions, um, for, uh, Dr. Rubio and team? All right, um, no public comments. Uh, well, it's opportunity for a motion. I'll move approval of the construction contract for the ECCL project, um, construction contract with Turner Construction specifically.
Which is four, five.
This is item, um, you know what I meant? I did it this time. See, it's your fault, Jim Trabber. You know, I did it this time. You know what? It's been a long day. Approval of Resolution 24, so I move approval of a, a Resolution 24, 2013, 14, authorizing superintendent to sign a lease, leaseback agreement with Turner Construction. Any, uh, can I get a second?
A second.
Any objections?
No.
Uh, roll call, please?
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Ash?
Yes.
President Dice?
Yes.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
And I talked about him having a pen. Okay, now I have a pen. All right, so we're now on to item five, construction contract for the ECCL project. Dr. Rubio?
Thank you. Uh, President Dice and board members, the purpose of this is to, uh, consider approval of the proposed contract with Turner Construction for the ECCL project under the terms and conditions as defined in the, uh, contract.
All right, any questions on this contract that's in front of you? I know you already answered.
Well, yeah, I don't have a question, but I do have a statement.
Okay, great.
You know, I just really, 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 really want to thank Turner for their patience, you know, and their diligence on this project. It has been almost a decade that they have been involved with this district, with this project. They have stayed, you know, true to form. They have not wavered in their commitment to this, um, to this district and to this project. And, I mean, they could've walked a long time ago, but I just want to let them know how appreciative I am, you know, for, you know, them working, you know, and staying, you know, true to this project along with our architects. You guys have been phenomenal and I just want to thank you all for your patience, you know, and your time that you've put in. That's it.
Other board member comments? Please?
It's been a long ride.
I'm good.
Look, you know, we're like, she's gonna go. Those tears are coming.
I, I would just, uh, I just would-
Joy wants to make a comment.
No, no, I've just, I'm sure if everybody can see my face, they know how happy I am. So I'm just gonna sit here beaming. This is a big day.
I would, I would just like to add, if you don't mind, that, uh, I'm very proud to be here as a new superintendent and be part of this partnership and this process. Uh, I would, uh, echo, uh, the thank yous and say, uh, I'm, I'm kind of glad I wasn't here throughout the years. But, uh, I'm very glad to be here now with the, uh, architects, the construction firm, with the management company, Swinerton, uh, internal staff, Mr. Bonet and everyone, and legal who have helped with this. And as well as, uh, I want to say thank you to, uh, the city staff who work so hard on this and the city, uh, attorney. And, uh, really thank you in advance to the city council for their ongoing, um, conversations and considerations of our partnership.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna, I'm, I was coming to you. Um, I, I'll hold mine till after. Please, Mr. Bukowski.
Okay, yeah. Well, it certainly has been a long road, um, and all of you haven't been here since the whole road started. But, um, this started out as a $270 million contract. You know, we were gonna take AC Transit and do a lot of things that didn't really happen. So I'm glad we'll reach this point. And I really think, uh, Swinerton's done a great job since they've been on board and getting the price of this contract lowered from the 59.9, that's really a, that's really an accomplishment there. I mean, Swinerton almost paid, paid their way by doing that and I think it's great. So, uh, please approve this and thank you.
Done with it. All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Um, yeah. So, I, I was just gonna echo all the comments, um, before and, um, note that, uh, I think even as a board member, pretty new to this project, when I started many moons ago, I've transformed since then myself. So I understand how long it's been, um, but I think it's a powerful project that, um, I do hope to see during my tenure, um, as a board member, um, completed and, and done in such a way. And I think, um, where, uh, previous, uh, former board member, Simons, would, would say, this all speaks to a physical location, but the work of, um, uh, of what we're, what we've talked about is still an ongoing task and remains, uh, you know, I'm incredibly optimistic about what outcomes that are incredibly positive for every child in this community, in this area, um, that will, will essentially walk through this, these buildings. I think it's amazing. So, um, and one day, there may be other little people we know, one day, that go through this building. So, uh, we're, we're little people, little people go through. So I think it's, uh, it's a wonderful project and, um, and I've been deeply moved by it and that much more committed to community schools. I think it's phenomenal what the city and school district have accomplished by getting to this point. So with that, I'll just, um, ask for a motion on item five, construction contract for the ECCL project.